Good evening, I'd like to convene the City Council Success Agency to the Westminster Department Agency meeting right now, 7:05 PM, Wednesday, October 12, 2022. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor Tom.
Here.
Vice Mayor Monzo.
Here.
Councilmember Doe.
I'm here.
Councilmember Ho.
Here.
Councilmember Nguyen. You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Next, we have salute to the flat will be Councilmember Kimberly Ho and invocation will be Councilmember Chi Charlie Nguyen.
National Legion to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of San, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for invocation. Heavenly Father, we ask for your guidance as we meet tonight to conduct business of our city government. Help us keep in mind that we are here to serve the people of Westminster and enable us to make our decisions so that we may do what is best for all of the citizens we represent. Amen. Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Ho and Councilmember Nguyen. Next, we have expert communication. Oh, City Attorney, would you like to explain about the closed section, please?
There was no closed session tonight, so there's nothing to report.
Thank you so much. Next, we have City Clerk Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, the closed session item had been withdrawn, so therefore there was no closed session, so we'd like to put that on the record. Also, on the regular agenda for tonight's meeting, item number 4.1 was also withdrawn, so that will not be on tonight's agenda. And we continue to invite members of the community to please apply for our various vacancies. Please visit us online at our website and feel free to submit an application. Also, there were ecomments that were submitted and available on the city's website. I conclude.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we have the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. So we have quite a few events that are coming up, so just like to make sure that, to invite everyone out to them. So first, we have a pizza, police, and pink patches that's going to be taking place on Tuesday, October 18, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, and that's over at Magic Mike's Pizza, located at 6152 Garden Grove Boulevard in Westminster. Pink patches will also be available for sale at that event. The Saturday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We also have a Love Westminster Pop-Up Outreach Event that's going to be taking place at 8970 Bolsa Avenue in the parking lot. And coming up on Friday, October 28, over here in the Civic Center, we're going to be having our trunk-or-treat event as well as a movie night. Last year, we had the movie night here at the Civic Center with the trunk-or-treat over at the Family Resource Center. This year, we're thinking bigger and better, so we're bringing that here. Games and activities will be at 4:30 PM, and movie night will start at 6:15, and we'll be showing the Addams Family. The Westminster Family Resource Center's Community Engagement Advisory Committee is hosting a safety presentation on Tuesday, October 18, at 6:00 PM over at the Family Resource Center, and our Police Department staff will provide safety tips and crime prevention information. You can actually take the slides down. Senior Center Halloween Luncheon is going to take place on Monday, October 31, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. Senior Center is excited to once again host their annual Halloween Luncheon with live entertainment and a great meal. Costumes are encouraged. Lunch will be served outside of the front entrance. And again, if you are senior or Nova Senior who would be interested in the wonderful Senior Center activities that we have, contact our Community Services and Recreation Department. Just an advisory on Garden Grove Boulevard. We have a contractor that's going to be working out on Garden Grove Boulevard for approximately 10 months' worth of construction. Those areas that'll be impacted include Garden Grove Boulevard from the I-405 northbound off-ramp, 22 eastbound on and off ramps to about 750 feet east of Edwards Street, and also Edwards Street from Garden Grove Boulevard to Trask Avenue, and then Trask Avenue from Edwards Street to west of Iowa Street. And these, every time that there's a construction project, these notices are on the website as well. So again, that's going to be impacted for about 10 months. So city staff's on site, you know, at that, at that construction site to inspect the work and also address any concerns residents and motorists have with, you know, with traffic concerns in that area. We'd also like to welcome a few new employees to our city. Samantha Berseño, Claudia Flores Edkin, Nicholas Figueroa, Macrina Garcia, Alsa Biares Arzate Diaz, Lane Nguyen, and Deng, and Eric Point. These are combination of part-time and full-time employees, so we'd like to welcome them to the city as well. Also, this last Monday, the city held a community event to discuss the Central Cities Navigation Center. It was, it was very well attended and received, and there were some really good questions as well. That video is available on the city's website if you would like to learn more about, about the Navigation Center project that we are working with the cities of Garden Grove and Fountain Valley. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much, City Manager. So next, we have special presentation. We have a few special presentation tonight. The first one will be Proclamation National Repair as Month. Second will be Certificate of Recognition of Vietnamese Student Association at La Quinta High School in Westminster. And the last and least one will be presentation of the 2022 Affordable Housing Award for Westminster Crossing Project by the Kennedy Commission. So I'd like to invite all members of the Council to join me for a special presentation. Testing, alright. So Proclamation National Repair as Month, September 2022. We're asked National Repair as Month is nationwide coordinated effort sponsored by US Department of Homeland Security in September to encourage Americans to prepare for emergency in their home, businesses, and school. And we're asked this national effort aim to increase public awareness concerning importance of preparing for emergency and to persuade individuals to take action. Whereas American Red Cross offer free community repair as resources to keep community members safe during disaster. And we're asked during the month of September, residents are urged to take measure to make themselves and their family better prepared for emergency and staying informed by registering on alertoc.com for emergency notification. Whereas being prepared in lieu, creating an emergency supply kit containing items that will allow you and your family to survive for at least three to seven days in the event of emergency, and recommend having emergency kit for home, your car, and workplace. And whereas throughout the year, the city promote emergency repair as by providing ongoing repair as training and exercise for city staff, providing public education to the community, and maintaining emergency repair as information on the city website, in the lobby, City Hall, and at the Police Department. Now therefore, a three-time at the City Westminster, we have Vice Mayor Colin Manzo and Councilmember Ty Doe, Kimberly Ho, and Chi Charlie Nguyen, due hereby program September 2022 at National Repair as Month. The City Westminster encourage all resident and business owner in a community to be prepared for emergency through education, maintaining adequate supplies, and discussing an emergency plan. So that is our National Repair as Month, September. So next presentation, we have a certificate from the City Westminster in Loop 5, signature from Westminster City Council to Westminster Student Association from La Quinta High School, Garden Grove Unified School District. So may I invite the president of the VSA or maybe the teacher? So the certificate for your dedication and contribution in supporting the Vietnamese culture by celebrating Lunar New Year with positive spirit in a community. So thank you so much for everything you've done for the community and congratulations.
Testing, okay. So on behalf of VSA and all the students here, we would like to thank you Westminster for supporting us in all of everything that we do, and we are proud to represent Westminster to promote the Vietnamese culture within our community. Thank you.
And then, do we have another item? Okay, so, so the City Manager, we handle that.
Right, thank you, Mayor, members of the Council, members of the community. Back in 2018, 2019, the Westminster Crossings Project was approved by the City Council, and it's been a wonderful project of affordable housing. And so today, we'd like to show a video as well as, you know, this project's actually won an award this last year for, as an affordable housing project. And so we'd like to show a feature that's been put together that features this project and the impacts of the community. And then we have, we have someone here from the Kennedy Commission as well. Play the video. So at this time, we would like to invite Cesar Cover Rubias from the Kennedy Commission as well as the City Council down below. Staff as well. Michael Sun.
Thank you. My name is Cesar Cover Rubias. I'm the Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission, an organization that works in Orange County to increase affordable housing opportunities for working families, low-income working families throughout the county. And as we know, housing continues to be the, one of the largest challenges for a lot of our working families. When families are paying 50%, 60% of their income towards rent, that leaves very little for other necessities in life. So we really want to appreciate and recognize your hard work here at the city, your staff, council leaders, and the people of Westminster for the courage to be able to address this critical issue of affordable housing. In recognizing this, we want to highlight a few things about this great development that the Kennedy Commission, along with the Affordable Housing Clearing House, and also a group called the Orange County Community Housing Corporation. On a annual basis, we select developments in the county that represent the critical needs that are being met in the community. So when we were evaluating this year developments, Westminster Crossing stood out among a lot of applicants. And the main things that I want to highlight about that is there is a critical component of 65 units that are addressing community needs for large families. Among those, there's also 20 units that are representing the needs for communities that are struggling beyond just regular housing. They need permanent supportive housing, they need permanent services. So that's what really stood out to us, that this developer, the city, thoughtfully thought about a project, a development, I want to call it a development, a development that would address community needs in the mixed-use kind of environment, but also mixed use of other populations. And that's incredible because they thought about that, and they were able to also address the services as part of that. The other critical component that stood out in our discussion was the intentionality of the city staff and the developer in looking at this development in the city, engaging the local high schools to make sure that the history of Westminster was ingrained into this development. And it was also highlighted, as it was shown in the murals today. So on behalf of the Kennedy Commission, the Affordable Housing Clearing House, and the Orange County Community Housing Corporation, we want to make sure that we give you this award recognizing that the Westminster Crossing development was awarded a Large Family Development Award. And we appreciate all your hard work as a city, from the staff, to your residents, to elected officials, for all the hard work that you put into this development. And we hope that this continues to be one of many other developments that come in the city as affordable housing continues to be a critical need in our community. And we're housing people here, keeping people here, making sure they have an opportunity to thrive in your city. So thank you for that.
Well, on behalf of Westminster, the City Council, I'd like to, I'd like to extend our appreciation to this beautiful award. I want to thank all members of the Council, Department Head, our city staff, and other housing agency for working together. I believe that for the last several years, our city, we've been coordinating and partner with other agency to build up a few affordable housing projects to respond to high housing demand from the community. But we really appreciate this award. Thank you. Alright, so next we have oral communication.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, but within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, any person wishing to address the City Council should complete a green form, and we have a few of them, and we also have a few, we have an advanced speaker. And at this time, I'd like to call Terry Rains.
Hello? Now it is. Okay, gonna start over. Good evening, Terry Rains, Westminster. I'm in the Citizens Academy with our great Police Department at the range tonight, so I'll have to speak and run again. This is probably a first for me, but I didn't have time to review the agenda packet as closely as I usually do. I hear a heavy sigh of relief from staff right about now. But I sent enough emails about the last agenda packet pointing out errors that should tide them over. Lately, I am not getting responses to some of my emails, but oftentimes I do see changes made based on them. A simple acknowledgement and/or a thank you would go a long way in showing members of the public that we are heard. I attended the Westminster School District's 150th Anniversary Celebration on September 29. It made me really proud of our school district and our city's history and heritage. It is also always an honor to meet and mingle with Sylvia Mendez, who was the rock star that day. Long before Westminster was incorporated as a city 65 years ago, it was a thriving colony, one of the earliest in Orange County, and seeing so many images on display there celebrating our rich history was a real treat. Most on this council seemed to think Westminster was nothing until 1975, so hopefully this event reminded you that is not the case. On Monday, I attended the community meeting about the Navigation Center project. It is exciting to see this finally happening, and I give a lot of credit to our City Manager Christine Corden for getting this going. Since the last council meeting, I have attended several candidate events. The meet and greet at Bolsa Chica Park on Saturday was great and allowed voters to meet and mingle with the candidates. Councilman Nguyen and District 4 candidate Nam Quan Nguyen were apparently out of town at the same event, so they didn't show up. An online video showed a car ramming hard into Nam Quan's car while he was away. And oh, the Orange County Firefighters Association pulled their endorsement of Nam Quan. So hell no to Nam Quan Nguyen for District 4, and yes to Terry Bu Nguyen. Amy West confirmed she would attend the event just days before, but then she didn't bother to show up. Her empty table and name card spoke volumes about her character. After all, this event was in District 1, hosted by District 1 voters where she is running. So hell no to Amy West, vote for John Gentile. Voters approached Ty Doe's table to confront him about his refusal to vote to allow us to vote on Measure Y and about him campaigning against the measure. Apparently, his answers, or should I say non-answers, only further upset those voters. The consensus was his vengeance to take down Tree and Charlie is more important to him than the 91,000 residents he hopes to represent as mayor. Worse, he blasted out a campaign video ad that stated the Hispanic population in our city is only 8%, when in fact, it is 25%. And he did so smack dab in the middle of Hispanic Heritage Month. He also grossly overstated the Caucasian population. Not a good way to convey that you will represent all residents if you don't even know who those residents are. The Hispanic and Caucasian voters are who helped get him elected as the top vote getter in 2018. And it makes us former Doe supporters really sad to see this downfall. His attack dogs continue to go after anyone who no longer supports him with their hateful racist allegations and worse. And Ty seems happy with that. It is, and he's smiling right now. It is as if he has become the very thing he despised about others on this council. My own personal tipping points were his racist and grossly disrespectful attack on one of our American Vietnam War veterans, who's constantly picking fights with Councilman Nguyen, and his downright ignorant position on Measure Y. Many voters are echoing the same sentiment. I am doing my best to educate voters about Measure Y, including the Vietnamese-speaking voters. When I appeared on full Bolsa TV, it was great until they decided to put the Communist Vietnam Star flag next to my image and the South Vietnam's three-stipe flag next to Kimberly Ho's in the same promo with a sensationalistic headline about how the American woman is angry about communism. Well, you know what? Yes, I am angry about all of you using communism and racism as your political rhetoric, preying on the very real fears of the first-generation refugees who really did suffer at the hands of the communists and risked their lives to come here for your freedom. The election is just 27 days away. There will be a candidate forum hosted by our Chamber of Commerce and the Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce on October 26, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, that's a Wednesday, at the Marion Warren Building. It's also a council meeting day. Horrible time to have a forum in the middle of the week during work hours on a council meeting day and not even televised live, but I believe it will be recorded. I really tried to find someone that I could support for mayor, but I will not be voting for any of the four candidates on the ballot, for not even for what some might consider the lesser of the four evils, because in my opinion, they are all four equally bad. Instead, I plan to vote for the qualified write-in candidate for mayor. The only one sure vote for all of us is yes on Measure Y to save our city. So let's do this, Westminster. Thank you so much. Vote yes on Y.
The next speaker is Michael Veronja.
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmembers. A couple quick items. Item number 5.3, I'm urging that you approve this item. The school resource officers provide an exceptional support to the schools here. Garden Grove Police Department has a really great SRO program. Those off- Those officers that are at the high schools also take care of the feeder junior high schools that go in there. They get to know the students, starting with sixth grade. They go right through the education, all the way up into high school with these kids. They're able to stop problems. They get feedback from the students, the teachers. And this really is a program you guys really need to get into, and I wholeheartedly support. And it's not just because you're adding a police officer, and I'm partial to the cops, obviously. But this really is a great program that you need to get involved with. The other item is, again, the Quang Tree Monument's going to be on the agenda for next month. Hopefully, I'm going to have a special guest here with me next month. I'm going to have Sid Goldstein's daughter here. What I would like this council to do is explain to her why it's so important that you want to put this monstrosity over in that small park. There's already a Quang Tree monument. It's in San Jose. There's no reason to put another gigantic monument in that small park across the street. I also would like you to explain to her why, why you want to do this. And to me, it's kind of a defamation of Sid Goldstein himself. I have a letter that was written by her. Her name is Debbie Goldstein Johnson. She was a school teacher right over here at Westminster School District at Warner Middle School. She was there for years before she retired. Her and her family still live in Westminster. After her father's service, he remained in the city and lived out the rest of his life here. He was active in veterans programs. And he was a wholehearted supporter of any veteran that served, especially those that served in combat. And in this city, we have some World War II veterans, obviously, very few left. Korean War veterans, we have Vietnam veterans, both from the U.S. military and the Vietnamese military that live in this city. The Vietnam Memorial over there is perfect for that park, especially where it's at. But to add this other thing over there to take up that much room, there's really no reason for it. Let's find private property to put it on. Again, Westminster Memorial Park. I don't know whether they've withdrawn their offer, but how about if we do that instead of putting it over in a small park like that? Thank you very much, folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is Nguyen Hong.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today I have a subject, a request of Mayor Chi Ta to withdraw his endorsement for candidate Nam Quan Nguyen. Li O C P F A dead. My underside is Nguyen Hong of Westminster District Four, California nine-two six-eight-three. I am writing today to inquire about Mayor Chi Ta's support of a unit for candidate Nam Quan Nguyen. Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen serious violate regulation four-nine-five-three of City Westminster when he up be trust really meet Caution General Nguyen Chak Thuan on November nine, two thousand and twenty, when appearing in the party with an intimate family at Moth Fair, not for the press meeting. And for this reason, Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen to resign from Traffic Commissioner of the City of Westminster thereafter. Following on September twenty-nine, twenty-two thousand and twenty-two, it means two days ago, the first station thirty-first thirty-one of a testing city withdrew its endorsement for Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen. After because Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen, the saver voters when posting on the campaign website, votefornamquann.com, was given to the O C F A. It means Orange County Fire Authority.
Sir, let me interrupt real briefly. Just in your comments, we have to be careful not to campaign for or against people. If you have criticisms, which it sounds like you do, you're allowed to put your criticisms forward, but just be careful not to campaign for or against someone.
I didn't make a complaint, you know what they did, okay? I think, you know, city have to change the policy. You have to change your policy to restrain candidate. We, in God, we trust. We don't trust the bad people, sir. You want to sue me? Go ahead. I'm waiting.
Please proceed. Please proceed.
Okay, so I don't repeat what he did because you already have my record, okay? The A District already have my record. Everybody have my record. I have a letter from Bonita. He say that your city and the A District have to take care of before going. So I go by step, city first. You have to change the policy here in city, okay? We don't select, you know, the bad people. He not, he is a, okay? Sorry. I know with the Mayor Chi Ta, he also the candidate, candidate for the position of California State Assembly, sir. You are Republican, I am Republican, okay? So District Seventy. So you certainly also need to protect your honor and reputation before the upcoming November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. I know your father. We are friends. I support you from the beginning to here. You are president of, you know, the university in California. Anyway, I think you are very smart. You smart enough to endorse a person with bad conduct and lack of civic morality. So because support Nam Quan Nguyen, we also expect the voter consider when choosing you or your opponent. In addition, I also ask the City of Westminster, especially City Manager, to cross out the name of a candidate Nam Quan Nguyen from the election result from November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Let disqualify the Nam Quan Nguyen. I do not want to using the name and future step to set up the K of unfortunate to net. Guess then, guess that Mr. Nam Quan Nguyen is elect in the K. He is elect. Then the City of Westminster will become my object to be a lawsuit. You want to sue me? Sue me before I do that. Because I am a Westminster four-District voter, I want to raise my voice as a will of the voters. I have the right to protect the district and choose a good person for representative for district resident. In God, we trust. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Tony Buoi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I am Tony Buoi. Been at City of Westminster for twenty-two years. I concern about the city of Westminster for growing and based on the integrity for city of Westminster. I bring it up three points. Honesty, truthfulness, and efficiency. And I have been working voluntary for the City of Westminster as a planning commissioner for two years, traffic commissioner for two years, and recreation commissioner. So I know that city is very important for the growth of our owned-up residents who stay here, who been making their family growing here. And I passed the test code of ethics. And I hope that all of you have passed it in the past two years and have to adhere to the principle of ethical and moral for the benefits of the community. However, I was very frustrated during the recently, I saw the, this one on the CD say Kimberly Ho, the only candidate endorsed by police and firefighters. And I have residents who send letters to City of Westminster Police Department. And we learned that Mister, the city officer has replied to us. Police Chief Lenny Darren has replied that the Westminster Police Department does not endorse or back political candidates. So whatever you put here, Kimberly Ho is wrong. You deceive people. I think that you are not deserved to sit at that position if you were elected as the mayor because you deceive people. And you also deceive the American people, American-speaking people, when you send letter to them, say, reelect Kimberly Ho, mayor of Westminster. You are not mayor yet. You are not mayor, so you cannot use the word reelect. You make people misunderstanding and mislead the people. That mean you violate the code of ethics. That is two things that I really worry that in the future, our city of Westminster has to be clean and efficient. And Mister Tido, he has been claiming that our city of Westminster from now on is Ho Chi Minh City. And you make big mistake, Mister Tido. And now if you want to run as the mayor, you surely people will not vote for you. Shame on your decision. And you have to apologize to people on your mistake. So that is the things that I really want to express to the city today. And related to the gentleman who just stand here. I know him. He has the some kind of connection to the Vietnamese communists in the past. And he has no right to come here to tell the people what to do because this is a city of freedom, of the people who fight against communists. And you affiliate with the communists, so you should not come here and criticize people.
Keep it, keep it to issues that are the council can address. This is not about other people.
All right. That is what I want to concern because a lot of people has abused the freedom of speech and freedom of spreading fake news and make people, you have deceive people. So from now on, I hope that you, all of you will be follow the code of ethics to make our city of Westminster the best for all. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Viet Youth Media.
Good evening, everyone, council members, chief, city staff, and city manager. Tôi xin muốn nhắc lại cái vấn đề tôi đã nêu ra từ tổ chức.
I would like to reiterate what I mentioned or brought up last week.
Lần trước, tôi đã lên án đã ông Chí Tạ khi mà ông ủng hộ và vận động cho Nam Quan, một tên cô đồ vô lại, rất là vô văn hóa, tiếng Việt gọi là mất dạy.
So last time I denounced Mayor Ta for supporting candidate Nam Nguyen. Nam Nguyen is a thug.
Mất dạy, vô văn hóa.
And Vietnamese, we would consider him someone who was not raised properly.
Xin lỗi, tôi phải giải thích là tại vì khi mà tôi nói ông là vô văn hóa là vì Nam Quan đã lên YouTube và đã dùng những cái từ ngữ rất là tục tiểu để mà thoát mà những cụ cao niên và người Mỹ gốc Việt.
The reasons I'm saying that, and please allow me to explain or elaborate. I'm saying that because Nam Nguyen have gone on YouTube and insulted the senior member of our community.
Và đương nhiên, nếu mà nói về nhưng cách nói về phạm trắc của con người thì tôi đã chứng minh ông ta là người không thường tôn pháp luật, là vi phạm pháp luật, đã bị rất nhiều cái vấn đề đối với tòa án hòa kỳ.
And if we talk about his integrity and also his characteristic, I can, I can say and I can prove that he has a lot of runnings with the law.
Và hiệp hội lính chữa hỏa chuyên nghiệp còn cam đã thu hồi sự ủng hộ và nghiêm cấm Nam Quan sử dụng tên tuổi, uy tín cũng như huy hiệu logos của họ trong lúc vận động để mà Mỹ dân kiếm phiếu của企支国 Việt.
And the Orange County Fire Fighter Association have withdrew their support as well as prohibiting him from using their name, their logo in his campaign.
Hôm nay, tôi kêu gọi thị trưởng Chí Tạ một lần nữa, hãy tẩy chai Nam Quan và rút lại sự ủng hộ của ông.
So tonight, once again, I would like to call on Mayor Ta, who would draw your support for Nam Nguyen.
Endorsement.
Uh, would draw your endorsement for Nam Nguyen.
Và tôi hi vọng ông sẽ dừng vận động cho Nam Quan ngay lập tức kể từ sau đêm này.
And I hope that after tonight, you would stop campaigning for Nam Nguyen.
Ông Charlie Chí Nguyễn, ông đang ứng cử để ra làm thị trưởng của thành phố Westminster.
Now on to Mister Charlie Chi Nguyen. You are running for the mayorship of City of Westminster.
Xin lỗi cho tôi nói tiếng Anh tiếc. I remember Amy Walsh have mentioned about you being council members, and I'm talking to you and you eating. You're eating while I'm talking to you. That show what kind of a person you are. You are not worth, you don't deserve to be our council member. You still eating, you still chewing. That's disrespectful, barbaric. Nhưng ông lại xuất hiện cùng Chí Tạ để lường gạt đồng hương Việt Nam.
So you appear with Mayor Ta to lường gạt đồng hương Việt Nam? To commit fraud, to commit fraud on the, pull a fast one on the member of the Vietnamese community?
Hai ông đã nói dối khi sử dụng việc nghĩ trên truyền thông Việt để nói láo rằng thành phố Westminster sẽ không bao giờ phá sản.
The two of you have lied when you spoke in Vietnamese and you say that the city of Westminster would never be in bankruptcy?
Ông đã làm nghị viên bốn năm nay, ông luôn nghe lời Chí Tạ.
You have been a city councilman for four years, and you have always followed or listened to Tri Tạ?
Chí Tạ đã ngồi ở hội đồng thành phố Westminster hai mươi năm nay.
Tri Tạ has been on the city council for twenty years?
Thành phố đã bị thưa kiện liên miên bao nhiêu năm nay?
And the city have been the subject of numerous litigation throughout the years?
Thành phố đã phải bùi thường hơn mười triệu đô la vì hội đồng thành phố đã vi phạm quy định sách nhiễm nhầm viền.
And the city have to pay out more than ten million dollars because the city have violate the anti-harassment policy?
Nếu ông cho rằng ông sẽ giúp được thành phố Westminster trở nên tốt đẹp hơn, xin cho biết ông sẽ làm gì khác với Chí Tạ?
So if you claim that you can make the city better, please tell us what you would do or other than what Tri Tạ has done?
Ít ra, Nam Quan cũng đã chê chắc hai ông và Charlie và Chí Tạ. Tức là ít ra là Nam Quan cũng đã chê Chí Tạ và Charlie. Tức là ít ra là Nam Quan cũng đã chê Chí Tạ và Charlie.
Or, well, at least Nam Quang has criticized both you and Trita.
Yes. Vì Nam Quan cho rằng hai ông chẳng làm được gì cho thành phố, chỉ biết cãi nhau.
Because Nam Quang is saying that the two of you have not done anything for the city except for
Bickering.
Except for bickering.
Ờ, Nam Quan và Ngô Kỷ đã thông báo cho đồng hương biết là thành phố sắp phá sản và không đủ cảnh sát để lo cho cư dân.
Nam Quang and Ngô Kỷ has told our people that the city is on the, was on the verge of bankruptcy and that the city would not have enough police officer uh, for its residents.
Nghĩ viên Tải Đổ và Kim Lê Hồ tuy chống đối hai ông.
Uh, Mayor, City Council um, member Taido and City Councilwoman Kimberly Ho uh,
Tuy là chống đối hai ông.
Although they are in opposition to the two of you.
Nhưng ít ra họ đã vạch ra cho chúng tôi thấy những sai trái của hai ông, đặc biệt là Chí Tạ.
But at least they show us or they point out thing that the two of you have done or the two of you, the thing that was wrong that the two of you have done, especially with Trita.
Ờ, ít ra thì chúng tôi cũng biết rằng là thành phố sẽ có cơ hội để thay đổi.
And at least we could see that the city uh, have an opportunity or to, to, to make a change.
Ờ, dạ vâng thì tôi lần trước tôi không có thời gian để nói hết với phó thị trưởng Carlos Manzo, thì hôm nay tôi xin được tiếp tục.
And so, last time I did not have sufficient time to address um, Vice Mayor Carlos Manzo.
Ờ, phó thị trưởng, lần trước cuối giờ tôi muốn nói rằng là những cái người to mồm không có đại diện cho chúng ta trong bất cứ cộng đồng nào. Cái nguyên tắc đó nó, nó ứng dụng, nó apply cho tất cả cộng đồng.
And so Vice Mayor, uh, last time before I ran out of time, I was trying to say that people with a loud mouth or they do not represent us, they do not represent anyone in the community.
Ờ, tôi không dám nói tất cả những người ủng hộ ông, những tư tri của ông là những người kỳ thị. Nhưng mà tôi biết là có một số người, rất ít, rất ít nhưng cũng có một số người, tôi có thể gọi là những kẻ, những người kỳ thị.
I, I, I do not wish to say that your supporter are racist. But I know that there are uh, some, or very little, very little number, uh, small and only a few of your supporter, I can say that they are racist.
Ờ, và tôi hy vọng ông sẽ đặt quyền lợi của thành phố lên trên tất cả, lên trên quyền lợi của bè nhóm, phe đảng cũng như là những cái sắc tộc cộng đồng.
And so I hope that you would place the interest of the city above all, above factions or so that you can serve this city and its community.
Lý do hôm nay tôi nói với ông như vậy thì giống như tôi mới trình bày, tôi không nghĩ rằng bản thân tôi và rất nhiều thành viên trong cộng đồng người Việt không còn thể tiếp tục dung túng cho băng đảng của Chí Tạ để tiếp tục lũng đoạn thành phố nữa.
The reason I'm addressing you today, I'm saying all these things because I think that the people in my community no longer support this gang of Trita and
Tôi hy vọng cái ông sáng lượng người quyết định thành ra ông sẽ rất là sáng suốt và công bằng khi mà ủng hộ một cái người nào đó có cơ hội để thay thế cái băng đảng này.
I think you are wise enough and that you would support the right candidate to replace these gangs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Còn lúc này nếu có quý vị nào muốn phát biểu xin cho, xin cho chúng tôi biết, quý vị đang ở nhà, theo dõi nhà thì quý vị có thể ờ, giơ tay lên để cho chúng tôi biết là quý vị muốn phát biểu bằng cách chạm vào cái biểu tượng của lòng bàn tay ở trên cái màn hình của quý vị, xin cảm ơn.
Um, councilman, uh, mayor and councilmembers, there is one speaker via Zoom that wishes to speak at this time, can we let over beak? You may begin.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I would like to first say um, thank you to Councilmember Ho for taking my call earlier this week with regard to an item that has been removed, which was public hearing item four point one. And along those same lines, I would like to say, Vice Mayor Monzo. I appreciate you more than you know. I appreciate you hearing my rants and my raves with the blatant ableism, classism and racism that was exhibited in that ordinance. It breaks my heart that in a city filled with refugees, immigrants and beyond, that this city thought that that was acceptable. People are here living, some of them barely surviving. And they set up shop on this, on the sidewalks to put food on the table for their children and keep a roof over their heads. And for some of these staff members here at the city, our city manager, our assistant city manager, our community development director, I would like for you to remember one thing. Your salaries are paid by taxpayers. And those individuals on those sidewalks pay taxes every single day. They pay it through sales tax. They are doing their part. And it must be incredibly nice to sit up there in all of your glory. And know that you can put food on the table for your family. You can keep a roof over your kids' heads and your own. You can send your kids to private school. And you can do all of the things and not have to worry whether or not your kids will do without. But these families, these individuals are out there struggling to do what they can. And this city's idea of an ordinance was to make it literally impossible for them to do so. Mark my words, I will be keeping track of every single thing with regard to this item. Because I'll be damned if you are going to discriminate, blatantly discriminate against immigrants. I also find it quite ironic that on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, our WPOA had no problem bringing out a taco vendor to draw in crowds from the public, to feed them with food that's based in a rich culture. All so that people would come and speak at a council meeting so that they could keep their funding, the city could keep their funding. Talk about appropriation for every single one of you who partook in eating that food, yet you want to demonize them. If you don't want them here, say it with your whole damn chest. Because the way that item four point one was written, I'll say this. It looks like you found every single loophole to keep them from being here. And Christian, you and I go round and round numerous times. Um, I'd also like to point out this. You seem to be able to figure out how or your firm managed to figure out how to do an ordinance for the city of Fullerton. And the first draft was presented to their city council on July twenty-first, twenty twenty. Yet you didn't do any of this for our city. And as a resident, I distinctly remember around that time, residents were calling in because they were being attacked by people holding up Trump signs and how holding Trump stands. But all of a sudden tacos show up. And this city has an issue. I would like for every single person in that room right now to remember that the majority of events that are heartfelt and meaningful occur around food.
Time's up, Mala. Thank you. If there's anyone else on Zoom wishing to speak at this time, please raise your hand. Mayor, no one else is raising their hand at this time, that concludes our participant.
Right, so thank you so much, so uh, oral commu, oral communication is close. Next, we have consent calendar, or matter listed on the consent calendar, I can see the routine may be approved by a single motion, followed by roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of this item. Unless members of the council have stopped request, that specific item be removed from consent calendar for separate action or discussion. Who to approve?
To approve, second.
Right, we have the motion and a second to approve, then the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor, and that is to approve all the items on consent calendar as presented. The motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen and seconded by Councilmember Ho. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Thank you so much, so uh, next we have regular business, five point one, approval of professional services agreement with SDI, President LLC for citywide information technology consulting services in fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three.
A motion to approve, second.
Thank you so much, we have a motion and a second to approve this item as recommended.
Thank you, and uh, the motion was made by Vice Mayor Monzo, seconded by Councilmember Nguyen. And that is to approve the professional services agreement with SDI, President LLC for citywide information technology consulting services in the amount of five hundred thirty-four thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-twenty-three. And authorize city manager or designate to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho? Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
Alright, next, item five point two, community development block grant, CDVG program amendment to neighborhood pride, uh, multifamily rental inspection enforcement program strategy.
We have a staff report on this.
Alright, please.
We have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. This item is a recommendation to amend the code enforcement program strategy for the use of community block, community development block grant or CDVG funds. In terms of the background, the city of Westminster annually receives about a million dollars worth of CDVG funds uh, that are granted from the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development known as HUD. HUD regulations permit the use of these funds for eligible code enforcement activities. Since the nineteen nineties, the city of Westminster has dedicated a portion of its CDVG funds for code enforcement activities in eligible low and moderate income neighborhoods. The current eligible neighborhood is the, is what we call the Neighborhood Pride Improvement Area. And it is bounded on the north by Trask Avenue, on the east by Beach Boulevard, on the south by Hazard Avenue and on the west by Edward Street. The boundaries change over the years based on the census data. In May of twenty twenty, uh, the council adopted a strategy regarding the CDVG funded code enforcement efforts that changed from one that was a, a general code enforcement uh, effort to one that was focused on addressing the uh, potential substandard conditions in approximate, in the approximately four hundred and sixty multifamily rental units, housing units that were in the, that are in the area. This strategy was called the Multifamily Rental Inspection Code Enforcement Strategy. Since that time, through staff, staff's efforts, uh, three hundred and eighty-two of the multifamily housing units have been issued certificates of compliance. And several others have received violation notices that have been or are currently being addressed. So given the success of this program, we are recommending an amendment to the strategy that will continue addressing the multifamily rental properties in the area, but also expand the CDVG code enforcement funded activities to I, uh, to include identifying and abating the substandard conditions of single-family properties as well as ancillary commercial properties in this area. The amendment also removes the reference to the Neighborhood Pride Multifamily Rental Rehabilitation Loan Program because that program is no longer included in our CDVG funded programs. It was, that change was made because of a lack of interest uh, by qualified property owners. So instead, uh, funds were allocated uh, towards uh, street improvements and park improvements. As HUD regulations require the city to update the program uh, strategy before expanding the program, our recommended action is for the mayor and city council to approve the amended Neighborhood Code Enforcement Program Strategy dated October twenty-twenty-two for the Community Development Block Grant Program. That concludes my presentation, myself and our staff, our housing specialist Michael Sun and our CDVG uh, code enforcement officer George Perez are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
I have a question.
Please.
Um, what are some of the examples of ancillary, ancillary component, commercial properties? Could you give me some examples?
So that would be properties located in any, any commercial zones. So along Westminster Boulevard and other areas that were um, commercial properties are.
Within the qualify, within that, those boundaries, within the boundaries of the CDVG, the Neighborhood Improvement, Neighborhood Pride Improvement Area.
Okay, so how do you differentiate between the main component, commercial properties versus ancillary components? I mean, are those like a different type of, like the ones, I don't know, the term ancillary? Doesn't sound like it's, could you differentiate, could you define?
What we meant by ancillary commercial properties is, um, so the primary focus of the code enforcement, CDVG funded code enforcement um, program is to primarily target residential areas. And as an ancillary component to the program, commercial properties are included as part of that program.
Okay.
Does that clarify somewhat?
So I'm just gonna leave off the word ancillary then, so just commercial properties?
Correct.
Okay?
So the main focus of code enforcement funded with CDVG is to primarily focus um, residential areas.
Yeah, that I got. So I, I'm like trying to understand like what type of commercial properties, ancillary type versus what?
It could be any commercial property.
Got it, okay, so just in general, commercial properties, I mean, I really like to see that. I love that idea, actually, and I do have something in mind, like, for instance, um, you know, on the west side, you know, the Springdale area, you know, Willow, you know, the Big Lot area. So is that something we could use or could, you could, we could do what for that area using this program? CDVG grant type, grant block program?
So as part of this program, I mean, uh, it, it'll, if it's located within this area, um, um, code enforcement generally giving notices to uh, the property owners to fix up their properties.
Okay, being that, that area I'm speaking of is not in this Neighborhood Pride Improvement Area that you have defined. So I'm, what I'm thinking is that, who defined that? Did we, did you?
It is, it is defined because of the eligibility of the It is, it is defined because of the eligibility of the population as being low and moderate income. So in terms of this code enforcement effort, it, it is focused in that area. So the, our CDVG code enforcement, our code enforcement officer that's funded by CDVG, his focus is going to be only in that area. He's coordinating with the, the police department's code enforcement, but for programs or issues that come up in that area.
Are you, are you looking to do other areas in, in the future? Like something like Springdale that I just mentioned is something could be kept in mind for that.
So as part of our annual process that we typically start in January, that could be an option to expand the area. We just need to make sure that the areas itself are low and moderate based off census data.
But see, the thing is that you're including the commercial properties because you're not using up that BBC, CDVG money, right? And that's, that's what I read on your report.
So to clarify, the CDVG money is to pay for staffing, other items necessary to carry out this program. It's not necessarily to give out money to commercial properties to fix up their properties.
So that's for code enforcement to go enforce, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is basically just code enforcement?
Code enforcement.
Correct.
It's focused on single resident, commercial building, and as well as multifamily rental inspection.
Correct. So it's taking a more proactive approach.
Okay, so I look at this area and it's basically, it's a, it's kind of a older area. Is that why we, the city select and pick this particular area for?
It's, it's based on the eligibility by census tract. So that's how this area was initially, and, and, and if the census tracts change, then sometimes it has to, the area has to change its boundaries.
I guess my question is, we not randomly target this particular area, pick this area? We based on some kind of statistical data to make it fair and all that.
And, and qualified according to HUD regulations.
Okay, so we not just, you know, just rent, you have to just pick it because, all right. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First, can you repeat the numbers you said earlier about the number of cases that, and code violations that were issued in your report?
The, what we, what the numbers I had in the report were about our estimate of the multifamily rental units. We estimated there were four hundred and sixty rental units. This was back in twenty-twenty when they, when the program was initiated. It was, that was why, one of the reasons that it was decided to kind of focus on the multifamily rental units, because there were so many in the area, and trying to make sure that those housing units were, you know, were standard.
Okay.
And, and our statistics show since May twenty-twenty, we have issued three hundred and eighty-two, what we call certificates of compliance. Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, exactly. Cert of compliance. So out of those three eighty-two, how many have complied and?
Those are, I'm gonna ask our CDVG officer, George Perez, to just kind of describe that program.
You know, I know how the program works. I guess the, what I'm trying to get with this is tracking of success. It's like, how do you know that this program has been successful? This has been around for a number of years now, right?
It has, it has. We, like Debbie said, we've issued three hundred and eighty-two certificates of compliance. That's who, who's
Who complied.
With the, with the program.
So, but you, you've issued more certificates, NOVs, notice of violations, more than that, correct?
No, actually, most of them have complied out of the four sixty.
Without, without a?
So the program has been successful.
Okay, because for a number of, before you took over, so this is, again, I know when you took over this program, I've asked for a, a report, the council get a report on, on the cases that have been on this program, a number of cases, because it seems to me just driving through this area, it hasn't been a success, because to me, a successful program is, you don't just do one portion. You may be addressing, this program's addressing properties, but along with properties, it's, it's everything. You don't just touch one, one component of it.
It was, we were looking at this map, and I need to recuse myself because of my property. I have a property within the zone, so I am not to listen to one more word that you have to say. So I'm gonna recuse myself now.
Okay.
Be back.
Because on here, I don't think the, your, the CDVG program does not cover common code violations, correct? So during that time that this been in, and this program has been in place, why hasn't this other common violations have been addressed? Because that is part of, I mean, that is part of the blight which we're trying to, this program is trying to clean up, is blight. Is that not correct?
The, the program is, the, the strategy that was adopted in, in twenty-twenty focused the, the effort of the CDVG code enforcement officer on the multifamily rehab program. So that's been the focus for the last year and a half. And given that three hundred and eighty-two of these, of these units have received this compliance certificate, that's why we think we should expand the description of how we will spend our CDVG money to include other, other code violations.
But we're gonna just expand it to commercial properties?
No, 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 to single-family residential.
Single-family residence.
And, and that's why we said ancillary. It's focused mainly on the single-family residential and, and
And, and common, common, more common.
May I cue myself real quick?
Vice Mayor, I, you have to run a meeting. I looked at the area too big, and you know, I'm in that area.
I'm in that area too, so.
Oh.
Is it?
We have to clip a coin, right?
This is the, yeah, the straw drawing, flip a coin.
I'll, I'll recue myself.
All right. So it's for the record, because we don't have enough.
We, we need to have, we need to have one council member participate, so.
That's what.
That's what we just.
What's, he wanted.
Okay, just.
Right, right, but it's not a matter of, of choosing. It's a matter of random draw.
It is.
So.
But just so we're clear for the record, currently, we have the Mayor and Councilmember Do have all recused themselves from participating at this time, as well as Councilmember Ho.
So.
But we.
And you.
So, so the way, so.
Be, because we lose.
Let me step in, let me step in. Under state law, when you have less than a majority, you can't conduct business. So this is something we need to make a decision on, so therefore, we need one of the conflicted people to randomly draw and participate. So I have written down a number between one and three, and the one who selects that number, then.
Are we sure that these council members are in this area? Are you in this area? I just beach and.
I think everybody know, right? I think, Vice Mayor, I think you live in this area too, right?
Well, this is, this is Trask. It's not, it's not, it's not District Two.
All right, well, before we have any, before we.
No, this is not District. This is just a segment of District Two.
Yeah. Segment, yeah. Do you live, do you live in the area?
Two.
In the staff report, there's an area designated.
This is.
Live in this area.
Can somebody explain, this is, they're referring to, this is area four? And with the boundaries of Trask, Beach, Hazard, and Edwards.
I know, I live in there, so.
No.
Okay, I think it's pretty clear. So so, Mayor, can you select a number between one and three? Okay, Councilmember Do? All right, the number is two. So I was gonna ask Councilmember Ho to come in and select number, but the number was two, so. So Mayor, if you, you could recuse yourself, and then Councilmember Do will participate.
Sure.
Sorry. So my, my point was.
Last track where I was, but.
Okay.
My, my point was, because the program as it was written in twenty-twenty was exclude, was to focus on this, the multifamily program.
Yeah.
Then that description precluded our code enforcement officer that is funded from CDVG from doing some of the other, or other code, code violations in the, in the other, the non-multifamily areas. So this, this is, since there are so many of, that we have found in compliance, that's why we're saying we can continue to focus on, and continue to have that part of the program, but also focus more on other areas on, on single-family properties. And the reason we use ancillary is it's focused on the residential, but not to ignore if there's a code violation in a non-residential area that's in that qualified area, that we can cite them as well.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and that's how it used to be before this focused strategy was put in place in twenty-twenty.
I don't, I don't, I don't believe that that's the case from what I hear.
I mean, that's how it used, it used to be more open, not just focused on, on the multifamily units.
Okay, because that's what I'm concerned about, because it seemed that during the time that this is in place, that the code enforcement officer that was in charge of this area wasn't addressing a common, more common code violations. It was only addressing the issues as far as construction and, and and that, of that nature, wasn't addressing broken, like broken windows, discards, abandoned vehicles, and those kind of issues before.
That's gonna change.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think there was a disconnect between what was, who, you know, before there was a disconnect between your standard code enforcement and CDVG-funded code enforcement for a while, from what I understand.
Not a disconnect. I was only allowed to focus on.
No, I, I, that's what I'm saying, but I think maybe from what I see was there wasn't that communication maybe between, you know, typically funded code enforcement and CDVG-funded code enforcement. Yeah, correct. So, so it seems like the issues that with this new amended version, we are gonna address across the board, common violations, and then also focus on commercial properties. And can you give me example of what things you would look for in commercial properties? Because I see in this area, some of the commercial properties, the lack of just general maintenance, and just maybe beautification type.
Everything from beautification to discarded items, graffiti, inoperable vehicles in those commercial areas.
Across the board maintenance, all that. Okay, so it seems like you're, this new amended version is gonna cover a lot more than it was before.
Yes, it is. I'll be working with CPU, so we'll be working hand in hand to, to make, clean up that, that area, that CDVG area.
Okay, sounds good.
So you'll be able to see a difference.
And then what about reporting and tracking? How can we get? Like I said, I was asking for some of these, so we know if we can track the success. Is there, are you, have a monitoring program where you're, everything's being documented, what your, what addresses you're assessing, and what the violations are, and everything? So we can get a, an update, like, I don't know, every quarter or somewhere, somewhere where it's more.
Are you looking for something just for the CDVG program or comprehensive?
Well, we're focused on this, this, just this program.
Is it like a one-man show? You are the only person doing?
Oh, with Michael and Debbie, yeah.
Okay, so. By a, a three.
Have to give credit to George. He is a one-man show. He's doing all the work.
Yeah.
So how, how long is this grant gonna last? A couple of years? What's the timeframe on this?
We, as I, I mentioned in the report, since the nineteen nineties, the Council has allocated a portion of its CDVG money for this effort that, like I said, the boundaries changed based on the census data. So it is something that we intend to recommend for the next year, and it's something that comes before you every year in terms of our CDVG allocation and the programs that will be funded from that. So you'll, you'll see us again, well, you'll see Michael again in January, around January, to start that process again.
As long as.
So it's, it's really up to the council.
As long as council keeps supporting it, then it'll.
Exactly. We're, we're recommending it. It's something that councils, you know, since the nineteen nineties have, have supported. So I suspect it will be continuing for a long time. The, the, the strategy can change from year to year, and that's something that is presented to you in terms of this is the, the focus of that CDVG effort, code enforcement effort. So that is something we'll make sure that we explain what that strategy is and how it's working.
Yeah.
And this, this grant is only paid for the salary? Does it, does it pay for anything else?
Michael? Oh, you can answer. The, the budget pays for the code enforcement officer and things like a telephone. We have a portion for legal fees, and there is a vehicle involved, and so we pay for the vehicle maintenance. So it's really, as has been mentioned, it's a one-man show in this case, with George being, being our, our code enforcement officer. But as he mentioned, we have spoken with the Police Department Code Enforcement. We're gonna coordinate with them, and they're gonna know, you know, what, what, what violations and whatnot to send to George for his follow-through. And also, we're coordinating with CPU to have some, a good communication so that we can support his efforts.
George, questions? Since you're, I mean, like we keep saying, you're a one-man show, and then you're, it's, I mean, you're obviously under some limitations. Only one person can reduce so much. But is there gonna, do you see that yourself? Can you just report code enforcement violations that the, the regular code enforcement can handle without having you do it?
Not really, because that's, it's a CDVG area, and I'm the CDVG officer, so they can't come in and out, so. To actually answer your question, yes, I could call them if I need some kind of backup, if I'm falling behind or anything like that. But I don't see that happening. Helping a lot, because a lot of the things that, that you see are in your view, and a lot of the stuff is on sidewalks. You know, just things that, that when you drive by, you see, so they'll be handling a lot of that.
Yeah. All right, sounds good. I'll have another question. Is there any grant opportunity for this type of code enforcement cleanup? I mean, is there? Do you know of any, you know from?
We do have a collaborative effort amongst all cities, city departments to collaborate with the grant coordinator, and we meet monthly. I'll bring that up at our next grants meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sounds, I mean, this, I've always supported this, this program. Something that our city needs, especially in this area here. I'm really familiar with it. I drive around there quite a bit. That's why, sorry if I give, asking questions, which probably seem like I'm giving you a hard time, but this, this area does need, it needs a lot of eyes, it needs a lot of work, and, 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 and I think a few before your time, because I don't wanna say it was you. There were some properties that, that I think been extremely neglected, neglected, and and now honestly, it made our city look bad, so I'm glad you're on the case now, and I know your work ethic. So I'm happy to see you there. So thank you very much. So with any, with, is there any more, without any, is there any more questions from council? With that, yeah. Thank you. I'll second it. City Clerk?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The Council, Councilmember Do made the motion, seconded by Vice Mayor Monzo, to approve the amended Neighborhood Pride Code Enforcement Program Statu, Strategy for October twenty-twenty-two for the Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program. Councilmember Do?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
The motion carries. The motion carries three zero with two members uh recused, and that being Councilmember Ho and Mayor Ta.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Um we can call back the mayor for item. There he is.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh Next item five for three approval of of radio arrangement for school resource officer program with the Garden Grove Unified School District in fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three.
And move to approve.
Second, this is a really good item. I wanna thank uh Chief of Police, uh Police Department, and our city manager and our city staff. Um being partnering with the Unified, Garden Grove Unified School District. I uh I have received a lot of uh of uh uh a lot of requests from uh uh from the school, and uh I'm really happy to see that we have the item on agenda. So we have the motion and second.
Can I, I have a quick question. Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Um so this is um a question probably for our police chief. Um so we're, the Garden Grove Unified is 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 um needs us, and we're glad to be there for them, but they're gonna reimburse us for our services, is that correct?
That is correct, Vice Mayor.
Um it's just a quick, um I think I asked you this before, but I'm just curious since this came up again. Uh Westminster High School, Huntington Beach Unified, have you had a conversation with them about this same issue here?
Yes, we've had a a few different uh conversations. I would say probably about six months ago, uh I had a meeting with their superintendent and one of their school board members and broached the subject of them doing the same thing, and did let them know that it was possible that if they, if another school district did that, and they did not, that they would lose the SRO that we pay for that's there. Um and while not exclusively there, they are the, by far, the largest user of that SRO. Um and several months later, we were contacted by the Garden Grove School District who wanted to fund it. Um now, the Garden Grove School District is also funding um SROs from uh San uh Garden Grove Police Department, and I believe also Santa Ana, or is in talks with Santa Ana. Um so we're not the only ones, uh and this isn't unusual. Um uh there's other departments, such as one I used to work at, that funded numerous SROs.
Yeah, I would just, the reason I'm curious is because, I mean, even though I totally support this program, because you know, nowadays, you see what happens at our schools, you know, it's very dangerous. One SRO to me is, I mean, it's almost not enough, but
Um and I wish we had the resources to put one in every school, but we don't.
Yeah, exactly.
That said, I also did send every uh the three school districts in our jurisdiction that have the majority of the schools uh letters uh under my signature that um explained what we were doing and if they wanted to participate. Because it is a way for us not to rob our resources and the safety of the city by adding a police officer, and as you will see in that, uh I worked with um the finance director in making sure that we will take those funds and replace that officer, so the citizens who live in the community, visit the community, work in the community, they are not short a police officer while we put them in a school. We're we're good in the community, there was no impact to them, and the school gains a police officer for all those positive things that are in the staff report.
Yeah, so I'm I'm just hoping that that Huntington Beach Unified, because we, as you know, are are uh we're limited on with resources, and even though we want to keep, obviously, we want to keep the children safe, but at the same time, reality is that our our funding situation is low.
So if Fortunately, that it, that is our reality.
Yeah.
We did get um interest, and we are in talks right now, and I think it is uh okay for me to say this publicly. The Westminster School District is highly interested, and we are in talks on somehow funding NSRO for them, and they have the majority of schools within our jurisdiction.
All right, thank you very much.
I just have a quick question. Um Okay, it always concerns me when I was reading, I think there's uh quite a bit of interaction between the SR- SRO officer uh and the students, so do you have any policies uh set for them? Uh you know, how they, how the SRO should act, and in in what instance would would that person um be allowed to speak to uh to students, and would there be anybody present, like a third person present, when something like that happens?
Yes, we have, we have a uh a policy that that addresses all of that. Um not just for SROs, but for all police officers. In addition to that, we also send the officers that are assigned to schools uh to SRO School, where they address those uh best practices as well. Um the current SRO that's been an SRO for a few years now um will be reassigned, so he's coming in with a bunch of experience. However, should talks continue to go well with Westminster School District, we would be uh training a a new police officer, sending them to SRO School Resource Officer School.
Oh, okay. Great, thank you very much. Great program, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, seconded through this item.
Thank you, Mayor. And that motion was made by Councilmember Nguyen, seconded by Mayor Ta, and that is to approve the five-year cooperative agreement for school resource officer program with the Garden Grove Unified School District to provide one full-time school resource officer with the first year cost of a hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars for seven months of services in fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three. Approve revenue budget increase of a hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars to the general police reimbursements and expenditure budget, an increase of a hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars to the general police. Permanent wages for the fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three. Authorize the addition of one full-time police officer to the police department staffing, and authorize the city manager or her designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Councilmember Doe?
Yes.
Councilmember Ho?
Yes.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Monzo?
Yes.
Mayor Ta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero, Mayor.
You so must. Uh next, we have common, who's the council agency member, A B one, two, three, four, report when required. So would I to go first?
You go first. I have nothing tonight, thank you. All right, I'll go. Um, thank you, everybody. It was a nice short meeting, so thank you for that. Um I'd like to extend my congratulations again to the Westminster School District for their hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Uh the event was very, very nice, and like some of the um speakers said, it was very nice to see all the the history that we have here in the city, the history of the school district, the the landmark case of the amends versus the school, uh Westminster School District that just changed our whole country for the better. Um so it was a very nice event, and so congratulations to them again. And um just to thank the staff for all your hard work, uh again, everything you do. Um city manager, again, can't say enough enough good things about you. Adolfo, Assistant City Manager, thank you as well. Chief, thank you. Thank you all.
I'll be next. And ditto, uh that was a, gosh, how long ago? I thought, I felt like that was a while ago to the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of um schools, and that was a really beautiful event. I was so proud of our uh the um language immersion, Vietnamese Spanish uh immersion program, and that was just beautiful, great performances by the children. Um tonight, um I just wanna make really say special thanks to our uh planning our community depart- um community development staff, and that includes um Ms. Karita and um Steve Rocke, he's not here, and Michael Son, and gosh, I think there are a lot of people not here, right, from your staff, and for the great work that you did with Westminster Crossing. Um and I know that um started a a while ago, but it, the project really went very fast and smooth. I didn't hear any problems with that project, and I'm just so um proud to have such a a great um brand-new building. It looks so uh state-of-the-art, and it's beautiful right right on um uh Westminster Boulevard. We gotta have many more of those buildings uh like that um in that corridor. So I think that's supposed to be our our downtown, right? Um so I'm looking forward uh when the specific plan is done. Thank you so much for all your hard work, and congratulations. Thank you.
Councilmember Doe?
Thank you very much. Uh I uh wanna thanks the city staff um for your hard work. Um it's just uh just a shocker to get out here at eight forty-five and no closed session meeting. I mean, uh you know, to me, it's it's mean that we are doing good. Uh the city council, we are taking care of business, and uh there's no uh closed session. It was just a shocker for for me to get out here at forty-five, but again, it's it's a, it's a team effort, so thank you very much. Thank you, uh the council and the mayor. Have a good night.
All right, really happy that we have a really short uh meeting tonight, and the last uh last uh several days, uh uh few council member and myself had an opportunity to uh participate in a few events in the community, uh to feel a new uh business owner, they have their grand opening. And I uh I wanna thanks the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I think they work really hard. They uh, I think they earn the trust from the business community. And uh I wanna thanks all the staff. I think we have events here, even at school district. I know that a lot of work from our staff and other agency, but at the end of the day, I think that we have a really good event, so I believe in the future. I believe that everything going to do really well, so um really happy for today. So uh the next uh meeting will be on Wednesday, October twenty-six, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. Meeting now adjourned.